Okay, my iPhone says six o'clock, so we'll go with that. I'll call this July regular board meeting to order. At this time, Mr. Chris Wallace, would you deliver our indication, please?
Let us pray. Dear Lord, we bow before you this evening to seek guidance and some wisdom. And Lord, just be with all the leaders here in this district as they make decisions. Lord, for our students, for our community, for our teachers and staff. And Lord, just ask you to watch over us, guide us, protect us. As we go throughout this process, Lord, and if we go forward to try to get students back to school in the safest way possible. And, Lord, we just ask you to go before us now as we discuss items of importance that affect the school system and our community. We ask all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Good Lord, we're pledging allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. This town brings us down to approval of agenda. Dr. Townsend, do you have any amendments to the agenda?
Yes, sir, we do. We're requesting to add several items to the agenda. These documents came to us after the agenda had been released. First, the Bright from the Start 2021 Grant Agreement. Second, Highland Rivers Community Service Board MOU. Third, Dalton State College MOU. Fourth, the Swiss Contract, Swiss, as some people refer to Exhibit B. And that's where we do, where we operate, separate and charge system, where a Swiss system. And fifth is the Pearson Online and Blended Learning K-12 USA Virtual Learning Program Statement of Work. Basically, it's a contract with Pearson Learning.
Okay, thank you. I have five amendments to the agenda, five action items, so everybody can follow along the agenda. And Ms. Martha, that'll be Action Items I, the Bright from the Start. Item J, approval of Highland Rivers. Item K, Dalton State MOU. Item L, the Strategic Waiver Contract Amendment. And Item M, approval of the Pearson Online Blended Learning. Do you hear a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Ms. Finley. Do you hear a second?
Second.
Same by Ms. Ann. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
If I am not opposed, the agenda is approved. Section 5, Superintendent Reports. Dr. Townsend?
Yes, sir. We'll get right to it. This is the financial report. Ms. Smith is on vacation, so I'll be giving that report for you tonight. If you look at the screen, we talked about the general fund summary first. The FY '20 general fund revenue collected through June 2020 is 91.89%. And expenditures were 96.71% of the approved budget. We have not yet recorded $3573,000 in revenue for July and August QBE, but the corresponding expenditures are included. Next will be capital projects and SPOSS summer. SPOSS revenue for June 2020 was $542,988.51. You heard me correctly. That was nice. And interest earned was $1,583.48. Final draw on the amount of $4200,000 of designated funds for the PJHS project was transferred. GSFIC funds for the PJHS project were received in an amount of $80,213.80. Expenditures totaled $1238,547.89. And the month-end SPOSS balance was $6216,252.36. As usual, as recent events occurred, the school system has no debt. School activity counts, if you have in your board package as well. The school activity counts core report has been updated for the fourth quarter of the FY '20 for your review. Unless we have any questions, that includes the financial report.
Thank you, Dr. Townsend. The way the next report is operations and construction. Mr. Gillen?
We're getting closer to school starting, so our maintenance guys have done a great job of getting ready. And we're pretty well complete on our little summer renovations and modifications stuff that we do in-house and repairs. All buildings are probably basically around 90% ready to go back as far as cleanliness and still moving some classrooms and moving some things and getting things finished up. There's always the last minute. I'm curious, if we got two more months, we'd be at the last minute getting some of this done. It just always happens. I have ordered, and I actually looked up and found some hand sanitizer stations. We were having a hard time just getting the sanitizer stations. Some warm outs, some pre standing. They're battery operated, touchless. They will disperse any gel or liquid we have. We don't have to buy their product. We can shop and get the best price in the U.S., so that's a big plus because most of the time you get sanitizer, you've got to buy their bag of stuff and it only fits. So this, we worked hard to try to find this. Like I said, several classrooms are being moved. Transportation, this time of year, we have to do all our physicals and do our state safety meeting, which is usually a big deal, and we hold it at the auditorium. And a lot of people from other counties come, but they're doing it all virtual this year because of our situations. That's a little tough with some of our clientele because there's some of the older ones that don't like the computer and to do that. But so we're going to hold their hand and do it. We have to do it. It's law. And we hope most of them come back to work. We've had a few decide they're not going to come back. I don't blame them. So it just puts us into another predicament with transportation. Food service, best working hard with the cafeteria managers and everybody to develop a plan of how we're going to feed the kids, how we're going to let them come through lines, and how we're going to get the food to them and pick up the trash and all that kind of stuff. And our operations plan and Dr. Townsend's plan of getting back to school, you'll see more of that as we go on next week or two. And we've got some good ideas and I think we're going to be able to take care of all our students like we need to. That's it.
Thank you, Stacy. Questions?
Okay.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate all you and your folks do. Next update, Mr. Shea, Learning Management.
As we spoke last month, we were in the middle of researching learning management systems. Because of the timeliness of it, we wanted to give you an update. The committee decided that its learning would be the solution that we would recommend, knowing the price was well below any of the other prices. And we felt that it was a very good fit for our system. The decision was made to go ahead and do it forward with that. And we have training implementation in the works. Implementation, we just got a call yesterday. They've received all of our data that we have up until now with student enrollment as well as the master schedules that we have. And we are working towards the training schedule, which will be on track to have in place well before pre-planning and the future will be trained during pre-planning. So that is the plan. As long as everyone stays healthy and stays on track for the August start opening, then we will proceed as normal. Any questions?
I know it took a lot of work to do the research. I appreciate putting in your team did with that.
Thank you. A lot of input from a lot of people and we met multiple times. We worked on a very short, short time turnaround time. So I think we made a great selection. And I think the teachers will be well received. We're looking at some virtual training, some hands-on, train the trainer models. With this coupled with the Pearson product, we'll be in good shape when it comes to serving our students in this calendar for this year.
And also, I was happy with the please. How he had a larger team as well than just technology and instructional people involved, people at the school at all levels. So it was a team effort like Patrick said. It was good.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Dr. Townsend, I believe the presentation everyone is awaiting Pickens County Return to School Plan.
It is. I'm standing up and I may need to go to the podium. If that's okay with you guys?
Whichever you prefer.
Yeah. Make sure you guys, it depends if you can hear me from here or not. Okay, can y'all, are we good? Okay. If you look at that top. Okay, if you look at the first slide here, we're talking about the Return to School Plan. And we released this a couple of weeks ago. Basically, here you have different spreads that we're in, stages that are set by the Department of Public Health. You have the low and no spread. You have the middle and moderate spread, and then you have substantial spread. Right now, there's nobody I know of in the state that's in the low spread. Most everybody's in that minimum or moderate or the substantial spread. Fortunately for us, we're in that minimum or moderate spread at the lower end of it. And that's the key of how we operate schools because we plan on being in school as long as we can in that moderate spread, that minimum spread. But once it gets that substantial, we'll probably be doing distance learning full-time. So we want to stay in that yellow box or get to the green box, as you can see in front of you. You'll see in front of you kind of where the options are, we have. Are we going through those in just a couple of minutes of what's going to happen during those type stages? So the state is in the process, it's kind of a moving target. The state's in the process now of deciding how to reorganize their scale, redevelop their scale, decide what stage we're going to be in. They found out when they redesigned this a couple of weeks ago, all summer and all spring, we were in that low and no spread stage. And so throughout the early summer days and even during the task force, we were planning for that low and no spread originally because we thought we'd stay where we were and we were pretty low. And then when they redesigned it, we went to minimal moderate. And so once we kind of weighed in with the other superintendents across the state, the other school boards, other community members of, let's see how we impact schools. For example, if we have a nursing home that has an outbreak, does that really affect the schools? Should we, should our score be raised on that type of outbreak? And so now the governor's office and the Cadeau George Department of Education, which was developing a new plan for us and new guidelines, they'll be releasing that any day. It could be this week or it could be next week. We're releasing that where it's going to really tell us, they'll let us know on a weekly basis, normally if not more often, of where we're at so we know how to be ready to watch those scores. DPH will monitor that and be in charge of that. And we're working closely with Dr. Taylor and his team, Ashley up in Woodville County. He'll be working with us closely. And we've developed some new guidelines based on a conversation we had yesterday. We're fortunate, Dr. Taylor and Ashley came down to meet with the part of the leadership team, and we come up with the rest of the points we're going to talk about tonight. Okay, this is going to be, this was released last week, I think it's 2021 Return to School Plan. You'll see you have three, two choices here. We talked about traditional school, virtual school. We released this last week. We had a very good turnout of parents tuning in, watching it. We appreciate everybody who was able to kind of help spread the word, whether it's through our website, Facebook, media outlets, to let us know this. Our deadline's July 13th. Basically, students will have two options, either go to traditional school or to Pickens Virtual Academy. And the first set of slides we'll talk about now will be the Pickens Virtual Academy. You just approved a contract with Pearson. We'll be using Pearson products, the curriculum guide. It's a K-12 base of what's going to, it's K-12, it's K-12, quote, K-12 instructional material. That's what we're excited about. We had a hard time finding curriculum for the lower grades, a online curriculum, a virtual curriculum. So this is one of the reasons we chose Pearson as well. They have a proven track record. And this first slide here, you'll see the different points between traditional versus on distance learning. And then what's traditional goes, we would go back to school August 3rd. They're going into school. We'll talk about that in just a minute. And if we have to go home or for some reason kids are quarantined, we'll go into that distance learning model. Or it's a Pickens Virtual Academy, and basically Pickens Virtual Academy is their home online. Now, there are L's for extracurricular activities. They're still a dragon. They'll still get credits if they're in high school toward graduation, everything else. And still take electives and still be involved in your CTSO's such as Ag and those other areas, but it is totally virtual. Instructional piece, you'll see, we'll talk about instructional in just a minute. But basically, it's that day-to-day instruction inside the classroom. Pickens Virtual Academy courses using the Pearson product. Pearson curriculum, which is a standards-based curriculum for Georgia, it was designed for Georgia school systems based on the Georgia Standards of Excellence. Transportation, basically if you're Pickens Virtual Academy, you're at home, there is no transportation. If traditional school, we'll talk about that in just a minute. Nutrition, it depends on how many people sign up, is the route we'll go with nutrition. We may do a grab and go option for parents to pick up lunches for the week. Or we're in the designing stages now. We really need to see how many kids sign up for it, where they sign up for it, what school, so we can come up with a plan of how we're going to do this. Specialized student services, we have quite a few special populations, of course, like every school system, whether it's your special ed area, ELL. You have students who are in a 504 plan, they'll be receiving services in either model, traditional or virtual. Social emotional learning, I think this is the piece that some people forget about. This is so important. We realize students have been at home for a long time, since March. We know they're going to have needs when they come back. Some will be more needy than others. We know we need to support those students. From day one, we want to do that. We'll have some people come in and help work with their staff to kind of help recognize some triggers that help us identify some kids who need that extra support. So we're in those, you'll see as school plans come out the next couple of weeks, you'll see that addressed as well. And one of the areas, if you look at the areas we're looking at, all of this is because from that task force that we built in June, made up of parents, community members, teachers, and men to come up with this plan. Health and safety, of course, that's the number one thing you do in the school business. You worry about the health and safety, of course, and you also worry about instruction, but health and safety comes first. And you'll see how we'll do that in the traditional model, of course, in the Pickens Virtual, they're at home, so the parents will be in charge of that one. Technology, we'll be giving out Chromebooks for our kids in technology for kids who are in the Virtual Academy. They'll come up, we'll design a system for them to receive these Chromebooks, check them out. They'll receive the materials, online materials through Pearson. If they need any additional materials, like if they're taking an art class and need colored pencils or a certain type of paper, we'll be supplying that as well. If they need chart paper for a certain math class, we'll supply that. What do the kids need for instructional materials? If Pearson doesn't supply it, we will. That's the school system. We think that's important as well. Extracurricular, this is what we're excited about. Pickens Virtual Academy students, they can participate in extracurricular activities. We think that's imperative. We think it's important for one of our Ag students to participate in that cattle show, hog show, whatever it is, horticulture contest. We think it's important for our TSA kids who are participating in those activities through TSA, our band kids to compete on Friday nights, marching band competitions, core astronomy, football, baseball, softball, cross-country. All those extracurricular activities are important and critical in the overall life of a child. You think about life when a kid goes through school, K through 12, all the different school activities we have, and those Pickens Virtual kids, Pickens Virtual Academy will be able to participate in those extracurricular activities. Decisions, July 13th is coming up. We're releasing the traditional plans now too as well. We've had approximately 300 people sign up already, 300 kids signed up for the Virtual Academy. We'll expect more, I'm sure, before the deadline. We've answered quite a few phone calls, answered quite a few emails. Ms. Nita Walker's heading this up. She'll help with Kelly Flat as well. We're excited about what we're designing for the Pickens Virtual Academy. This came about because we knew our parents wanted another option. When we polled our parents, community members, they wanted that virtual option, and I think they deserve it. So that's why we created the Pickens Virtual Academy, and we're proud to stand behind that and proud of the next presentation regarding the Return to School Plan, traditional model. I'm going to switch sides so I can see it a little bit better. Okay, the first slide. Okay, if you look at the first slide, it says what it's going to look like. I believe we, I won't wait for it, you can tell that already, so we'll go from there. What's important is we're going to weigh the ideal with what's practical. Perfect world, we all live in a bubble, we all get to bounce off each other's bubble, and we get to play and we get to do everything we normally do in a traditional school model. That's not going to happen now. It's going to be a little bit different, a little bit unique, and that's just the way it is. And I apologize for having to back to you guys. So another thing to think about too is we're getting guidance from DPH against as recent as yesterday, when he came into our building and helped create some guidelines for us, gave us some suggestions to think about what's best practice and what's practical. That's what's important is we have to think about what's best practice and what's practical, what can we pull off effectively? What can we do for our teachers to be successful and effective in the classroom? How can we keep the students safe? We want students to learn but also be safe. Okay, mask. Students are expected to wear a mask when responsible distancing cannot occur, such as buses, hallways, class changes, other transition times. That's going to be important. This was a big one from DPH of keeping our kids safe in those close proximities and those closed-in areas. Although, you think about a classroom, we have to be reasonable too. If a teacher's teaching at the board, Promethean Board, over there, I'm used to walking around. I should have a cordless mic next time, I apologize. But if we have a teacher's teaching at the board, there's no sense for the mask if she's at the board. We'll do the best we can social distancing inside the classroom. We know it's going to be hard for a student inside a class to wear a mask for 90 minutes, four periods a day if they're at the high school. We know it's going to be hard for those kindergartners to keep those masks on, realistically, you think about it. A kindergarten keeping a mask on all day, we understand that. But we're going to do the best we can with the strong encouragement inside the classroom, knowing that at times they won't have the mask on inside the classroom. We need to work in small groups. We understand where if that second grade teacher, kindergarten teacher's working at a kid next table, we'll have the face guard for it. Because it's going to be important for those kids to see the teacher's mouth in language development. You think about that. Think about phonics, guided reading, all that's important. We want to develop our kids. We want to improve instruction. So we've got to come up with some ways, safety-wise, to help with that. We'll ask for our, of course, she can call the kids over and put the mask on, and when you're in lower grades, we know that's going to happen. It's a mask will slide down, things like that. So we understand that in the classroom, there's going to be exceptions. In an older classroom, let's say high school, we understand there'll be some group activities. They're working close to each other, touching almost shoulder to shoulder, and you want those masks as all possible. When they're sitting at their desk inside the classrooms, that's when you give them some leeway. And they kept harping on yesterday, be practical. They understand, DPH told us, we understand if you can't wear a mask 24/7, that's impossible. It's going to be hard. Yesterday, we were talking, meeting, when we were social distancing, we had our mask on, and still at times you can kind of pull your mask down or get some water or whatever else, but still, at times, it just happens. So we'll do the best we can with that. We'll work with the teachers, work with students, talking to students. We're asking for help, some of our student leaders kind of help spread the word, do some PSA for us regarding this. So we're excited about the plan we came up. We think it's a practical plan, and we'll keep going. Talked about staff there, district provide one mask for everyone. Families, of course, can bring their own mask. I talked to one parent yesterday on the phone, and her daughter's already got five masks for five different days. It's pretty cute, isn't it? Bringing their own mask. So those kind of things, we're excited about. Masks don't prevent you from getting it, only spreading it. You wear a mask for others. So remember that. Again, you don't prevent, it doesn't prevent you from getting it, but it can help you from spreading it to others. But we're going to be reasoned about and we expect those to be worn. Safety, we'll have wellness stations set up at each school. It depends on the size of school, where it's at, whether it's one or two wellness stations. We can do temperature checks there if someone's feeling sick, isolation area. We'll have hand sanitizers throughout the building, as Stacy talked about. Of course, we'll do instructional, proper hygiene, hand washing procedures. We'll have signs up, and we'll be, we're cleaning them every day anyway and sanitizing, so we'll continue to do that and to continue to do a good job in that, effective job in that. In class, camp will occur. We've had a lot of questions on Facebook, in-person, virtual meeting we had on Monday night, went well, a lot of questions on camp, we're having it. Reese says we're having it. Is it going to be a little bit different? It could be. And each area, each school may be a little bit different. That's where the principals need their, need to be able to run a school, because their school's going to be a little bit different than others. Harmony's going to be a little bit different than Tates, going to be a little bit different than Hill City. And even though Hill City and Harmony may be identical on the inside, well, it's not outside. The recess areas don't look the same. And on the inside, you have all those pods and everything else. So it's going to be a little bit different for each school. So each school's going to have a little bit unique plan based on their facility, based on their building. So that's kind of where we're counting on there. The principals leading the way as they always do, and they're in charge of their school. They're going to help implement the overall system guidelines, but they know how to run their school. We have good principals here. Basic school supplies will be provided, of course, and students, the Chromebooks, the RAL board, supportive devices will be provided. Transportation, expected to wear a mask because this is one of the things that we're really concerned about, DPH, a school bus seats close together, proximity with each other, airflow, we're going to open a few windows on the bus, not all the windows, still have the air going, go open a few windows for circulation. He said that's going to help a lot. We can help circulate the air in that bus. So we'll still have the air going, but that's going to be important too, and that's why we have the mask requirement on the bus. Loading from back to front, you'll see the windows again, and of course, we'll be disinfecting between routes. Okay, frequently asked questions. This is kind of important, student staff, of course, expect to wear a mask during transition before and after school, you'll see that cafeteria. This may be a question, we are going to, you have to use your whole facility, classrooms, cafeteria for lunches. That'll be a principal decision. They'll come up with guidelines for the area, what's best for their school. So one school may look a little bit different than other schools, and that's okay. We have to, it's going to be a school by school decision how they want to set that up and how they want to implement that at their own schools. So staff testing, we'll talk about that with the staff. Basically, we're not going to do tests beforehand. We talked to DPH, and they don't really believe in the random testing or say, hey, let's everybody go down and get tested today. And they said that's not effective. What we need to do is make sure the teachers self-monitor. If they feel sick at all, they need to stay at home. Of course, we'll have temperature checks and everything else for them at the school, monitors and everything else that can take their temperatures. They'll sign off, not sign off, but they'll have an agreement every day when you clock in. Basically, there's the different questions you ask, can we do now? Do you feel good? Did you self-check and all that? And teachers will be doing that, and they do a good job of that. Visitors, will we require to wear a mask when they're in the building? We're doing a little bit different with the K-1 this year because of the COVID outbreak. Basically, kindergarten, first grade, that first, pre-K and K, I mean, pre-K and K, that first day, we'll have where they can walk in, as long as the parents have the mask on and walk their child into the classroom, see the teacher. But after that, we'll do the typical drop-off. That will change again when we get in the lower stage, when things start clearing up, then we'll go back to it. So that's just a temporary thing until we kind of, it's just like the visitors. Usually, we want community members in there. We want business leaders in the schools. We want parents volunteering and everything else. Unfortunately, we've got to limit that, those activities inside the school now for safety. So we'll be doing that and really after that, just answer some questions. Here's just some additional virtual, traditional information, just kind of highlights some of the areas we've talked about in just the past couple of minutes. This talks about the spread, what we talked about a minute ago. And this can change. What's really important is for What's really important is, for everybody to understand, that even though I'm telling you today, we're in that minimum moderate stage, within that yellow box that you saw just a minute ago, next week, we could be green, we could be red, it changes, really changes daily. And so it's one of those things, we'll be monitoring that, we're looking at different ways to make sure the public knows, their parents know, if we do have a large spike for some reason, DPH calls us, it could be like a snow day. Hey, 10 o'clock at night, get a phone call from DPH, guess what? Urine substantial. Well, wanted to kind of do it the same way we usually do it for short-term emergencies like snow days and things like that. It's ever-changing, it's a moving target at times, the, which you go by your rubric, is not set in place. And for a teacher, for an educator, that's frustrating to all of us, because we used to, give us the guidelines, give us the rules, and let's tackle it, let's go for it, let's go after it, and let's implement it. Now, it's like, let's get that information as much as we can, let's do the best job we can. What I'm proud of is our staff, our leadership team, our leadership team's been working hard since mid-May in developing different guidelines. They worked with the task force, we got the input from the parents, community members, the teachers, developed these guidelines. And then after that, once they finished meeting, they turned in and incorporated really a large spreadsheet, and then we had to kind of incorporate that plan into a plan we can release, that's going to be user-friendly for everybody, and something everybody can kind of understand and follow. Because it's got to be a workable plan, it's got to be something where we all work on it together, and it's got to be something admin bias into, the teachers buy into, the parents, and I feel like we're prepared. We've worked hard enough, we've got a good crew, got a good team, good community, I'm proud that we have one of the lowest spread stages around. But I don't want to brag, because you're not going to worry, because you may never know what's going to happen, never what's going to happen tomorrow. So I'm proud of the community, proud of our team there, and looking forward to August 3rd, we're right now, still starting school on August 3rd, and I say that, it could change. Reason I say it can change, because you never know what DPH is going to tell you. And so, as of now, we're starting August 3rd. We are making one change, I don't need to announce to the local media and the parents, we can network out today, tomorrow. Open house, based on DPH guidelines, we're going to need to do a virtual open house instead of a face-to-face open house. And that kind of hit hard, with some of the admin, and me, and everybody else, because we all want to do that face-to-face, but we think, if we want to start school, let's go ahead and do whatever we can to start school on August 3rd, so we can get the Chromebooks in their hands, and let the teachers meet our kids, do the virtual hug, or whatever else. Kindergarten teachers, you may have to hug anyway, all that. It's going to be kind of unique how that happens, because a kid's a kid, and they're used to just running up to the teacher and everything else, but, so it's a new norm. Hopefully, it's just a temporary norm, hopefully, we can get back on track, and back to traditional school. This is a traditional school model, it's not traditional school in itself, it's not what you started with last August. But it is, I think, the best plan we can have for Pickens County, and I think it's been well-developed, and I'm confident in our local admin, our local teachers, to pull it off. Each school will have their individual plans released in the next couple weeks. And the reason I say that, they're still working out things with the teachers, and things like that, and as they create these plans, get the information they can release to parents, they'll do that. It's important for each school to have their own individualized plan as well, operations plan, structural plan, and carry it out. And we'll support that, and I know you will as well, so we're proud of that. And we asked the principals to be here tonight too, in case you had questions for them. I know you've heard from me a lot, you've got phone calls from me, or emails, talking tonight, but I think it's also important to have the people with the boots on the ground, just going to be on the front lines at the school, the admin there, the principals, and the teachers, of course, but tonight, the principals are here, in case you have any questions for them, or any part of the process you want to ask about, what we've been through the past six to eight weeks, task force questions. All our principals, we did this on purpose, all the principals stepped up, was a co-chair on one of those teams. Each principal had a, was a co-chair on one of the teams. So it wasn't just a system person, it was a school-level person helping lead that team through what's will be best practice for August 3rd. Any questions? Any comments?
Dr. Townsend, can you go back, I think, to the slide or so, and touch more of the public knowledge on what we'll do if school has to close the traditional school?
Yes.
Touch a little on that FAQ sheet, I think that'll be good, public knowledge know that we'll be going at.
And we just released that FAQ sheet, I'm not sure.
I got an email from Des, and they were.
Yeah, so say, if we can maybe pull that up, and pass it, it goes to.
Second to the last slide.
Oh, from the end, okay.
I don't think that, will this presentation be on the county websites, and parents can access it?
This will be on the county website, that you can access it.
That's it.
Okay. Okay. If you look, it says that traditional school closes, students transition to distance learning. And that's the key here, to remember that original chart we showed you at the beginning of the presentation, traditional school goes to distance learning, virtual academy operates as virtual academy, no matter what happens, whether it snows, whether it's pandemic outbreak, whatever it is, the virtual academy will stay the virtual academy, and the students will be in there for one semester, at a time, and they re-up for next semester. Okay, then each, they'll have their, each individual has their expectations, students will continue to be taught by their assigned teachers, and grades will count. This is important, where with the new learning management system Mr. Shea talked about just a few minutes ago, teachers will be trained, students will be trained, hopefully we can do some virtual training too, for our parents, to where this should help really increase the resources for our students and our teachers inside that distance learning classroom. We've got Google again, but we also have more resources now than just Google, which is nice. So it integrates well, we're proud of those extra resources we developed over the summer, and purchased over the summer for our staff and our students. And so that's going to be, that's a key of understanding, you won't go from traditional school to virtual, just because it closes, or because of the pandemic outbreak, you go from traditional to distance learning. And then, students enrolled in traditional school will not become part of the Pickens virtual, I just mentioned that, and meals will be provided to students during a distance learning occasion. We'll have some students with the distance learning, and this is where the teachers will be working hard and learning how to, let's say we have an outbreak, a kid in a elementary class, fourth grade, and it depends when that kid is exposed in that classroom. If the kid just comes to school, and sits in their seat, and they're there for a couple hours, and then all of a sudden, showing symptoms, taken to the nurse, they go, and they end up getting tested, and DPH says, okay, you need to kind of find out who was within six feet of that child during that time they were there. If it's a short little exposure time, it's going to be just a few kids. If it's a situation where we didn't find out until four or five days later, that kid was there, we found out, we find out the kid gets tested over the weekend on a Saturday, but yet they were at school all week, and they were sick, but asymptomatic, but tested positive, then that's where DPH is going to guide us, how to do the contact tracing of, how do we find out who that affects? It could affect the whole class, it could affect multiple classes, depending how the classes look, such as camp classes, recess, things like that. So we'll do the best we can, we're going to work with DPH, we'll have protocol set up, we'll have, we're creating templates as we speak now, for parents. We've had a situation over the summer twice already, with one of our athletic teams, to where we've had to call parents, and then follow it up with an email. If it's a situation within a class, we're going to call that class, we'll have somebody from the system office, and the school level both work in to call parents, email parents, making sure they understand what's going on. If it's more severe than that, where it takes out a whole school, that DPH says, hey, all you can is around you, just got red, or whatever else, then you need to kind of close down for two weeks, then we do it, we can't call everybody individually, of course, by the phone, but we let everybody know. So that's kind of the plan now, we think that personal touch is important, we think if we, we need to stay in close contact with the Department of Public Health, I believe with Dr. Taylor's help, Dr. Zach Taylor, who's in charge of this region, he's committed his support to helping us in keeping in contact with us on a daily and weekly basis, ongoing basis. We'll be in good shape, safety-wise. And so that's, that's kind of the plan, that's what we want to do, and we're excited about the first day of school. Could be more excited if it was traditional model totally, but right now, it is a traditional model, but it's not what we're used to. Other questions?
I just want to say, I know there's been a tremendous amount of work to go into the planning, I just want to say thank you to all the principals, and you, and everybody involved, and the task force that you put together. Just getting ready for a normal school year is a lot of work, but this, I know, has been a tremendous amount, and it's greatly appreciated, I just want everybody to know that.
Yeah, it's kind of like I told the principals, and probably telling myself, and I apologize, and they'll probably laugh at me tomorrow, it's kind of like that, it's like, on the surface, calm and cool, and below, you're paddling away, because we know we have to be ready, we want to be ready, the principals are charged, they've done a good job, and just really proud to be part of this team, and proud to help represent them tonight. And any other questions for me, or part of the team?
No, I just want to echo what Miss Ennis said, I mean, y'all done a great job, very informative, telling y'all thought of everything, and I say that, and then we'll forget something. Anyway, it looks like you've thought of everything, so y'all are doing a great job. And the FAQ sheet that we got earlier, I think that's going out, it's very informative, I think that'll help a lot.
It is, FAQ sheet is on the website tonight. Tomorrow, we'll be releasing the traditional school model we just talked about online, and also, I'll be doing a little video again to talk more about it. And I think that's important, to kind of help explain this, so they can kind of see it, and so that'll be released too, so the parents should have a lot of information. If they don't, they'll call one of us. We have engaged parents, and they've done a good job of asking questions. That webinar on Monday night, and we've talked about it a second ago, but you had over 200 people on a Monday night, engaging webinar, and if I'm correct, we've had over 30,000 hits on the webinar? And that could be other systems looking at it too, of course. But it's pretty amazing when you've had quite a few hits like that, it just tells you you have an engaged community, and we're proud of that as well.
Very good, thank you, Dr. Townsend. That concludes superintendent reports. Bring us down to section six, action items. Action item A, approval of personnel, everybody's had a chance to review the personnel action report, do I hear a motion to approve, PAR is presented. Motion by Mr. Schmidt, do I hear a second? By Miss Ennis, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five and not opposed, PAR is approved. Action item B, approval amended to superintendent contract, this is to get the contract dates to correspond with the fiscal year, do I hear a motion to approve that amendment?
I'll make the motion.
Which by Miss Ennis, do I hear a second?
Second.
By Miss Youngblood, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five and not opposed, the contract is amended. Action item C, approval of spending resolution for August 2020, we did one of these last month as well, this basically just authorizes the district to spend up to 1/12 of last year's budget, this is until we get our official budget approved. Do I hear a motion to approve a spending resolution for August?
I make a motion to approve the spending resolution for August.
Motion by Ms. Finley, second by Mr. Schmidt, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five and not opposed, spending resolution is approved. Action item D, policy on the, request for revision of the sex education policy. Dr. Townsend, you got any info on that?
I do, I do. Basically, we're adding, sex education shall also include age-appropriate sexual abuse and assault awareness prevention in kindergarten through grade nine.
Do I hear a motion to approve that policy revision?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Miss Youngblood, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Miss Ennis, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five and not opposed, that revision is approved. Action item E, policy for interscholastic activities and other requests for revision, Dr. Townsend?
I do, we're adding, to be eligible to participate, individual must be enrolled full-time in school during the semester participation. Retention of students for athletic purposes is prohibited by the Pickens County school system. And believe it or not, this has happened in the state of Georgia, and I actually did my specialist thesis on that. I won't mention the county, though.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve that policy revision?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Miss Ennis, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Finley, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five and not opposed, that policy revision is approved. Action item L, approval of purchase of freezer for PHS, I think I saw that documentation, that went out for bid, and low awarded bidder, I think, I think the freezer's like 20,000 or something, I believe. Yeah, 28,000, 28,000. Do I hear a motion to approve that purchase of freezer for PHS?
I'll make the motion.
Second. Motion by Miss Ennis, and a second by Mr. Schmidt, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five and not opposed, purchase is approved. Action item G, approval of minutes for the June 11th called and regular meeting, and the July 1st called meeting. Everybody's had a chance to review those, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Miss Ennis, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Finley, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five and not opposed, Ms. Mark, the minutes are approved. Item H, got quite a bit of surplus items for approval, at Harmony, Hill City, Tate, I think most of it was outdated library books or curricular material, I think there was a few broken Chromebooks and things like that, everybody had a chance to review that. Do I hear a motion to approve the surplus is presented?
I'll make the motion.
Which by Miss Ennis, do I hear a second? Second by Mr. Schmidt, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five and not opposed, surplus is approved. Action item I, approval of Bright from the Start grant agreement for 2020, 2021, any questions on that grant agreement? None being, do I hear a motion to approve it?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Miss Youngblood, do I hear a second?
Second.
By Miss Ennis, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five and not opposed, the Bright from the Start grant agreement is approved. Action item J, approval of Highland Rivers Community Service Board, MOU, this is something we do pretty much every year, basically just agree into our cooperation and support between the two entities. Any questions on that? Do I hear a motion to approve that MOU?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Ms. Finley, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Miss Ennis, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five and not opposed, that MOU is approved. Action item K, approval of Dalton State College MOU, again, this is something we do traditionally to, I think it's for educators looking to go into teaching, agreement, support between us and Dalton State, any questions on that? Do I hear a motion to approve that MOU?
I'll make the motion.
Which by Miss Ennis, do I hear a second? Second by Mr. Schmidt, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five and not opposed, that MOU is approved. Action item L, contract amendment to our strategic waiver, under Townsend, any info on that? I know this is kind of a technical.
Yeah, basically, it's your flexibility, where you're proven that, where we can have additional ways to run some.
Do I hear a motion to approve that contract amendment?
I'll make that motion to approve contract.
Which by Ms. Finley, second by Mr. Schmidt, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five and not opposed, the contract is amended. And action item N, approval of the Pearson Online Blended Learning K through 12, as we've been, has been presented to us, agreement to the program statement of work, any questions on that? Do I hear a motion to approve that learning program?
I'll make that motion to approve the learning program.
Motion by Ms. Finley, do I hear a second? Second by Mr. Schmidt, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five and not opposed. Pearson Online Blended Learning is. Pearson Online Blended Learning is approved. Section seven, board comments, any board comments? None being, that brings us down to section eight, do I hear a motion to adjourn this July regular meeting?
Make that motion.
By Miss Ennis, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Finley, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five and not opposed, this regular meeting is adjourned at 6:49 PM. Thank you all for being here.